State contribution, remember. One of the two that I gave them.
Yeah.
It's from DES.
Oh, okay. All right, good, good. The recycling.
Thank you for following up on my question yesterday. You guys have been getting me a picture. There's another one from the co- with the screen.
Yeah.
Are we all ready to start? All right, 6:30. I'm gonna call the today's meeting of the planning board, Sue River. Today is April 16th, 2009. And the first order of business is, I said, it's the call to order. The second is the roll call. Present, we have myself, John Bruekerberg, Chair, John Randlett, Vice Chair, Mike Ahern, Bert Suckford, Rhonda Bishop, Bob Dragon as an alternate, Jack Scarborough as an alternate, and Paul Wilson. And absent is John Kelly, Sleckman's representative, and there does not appear to be a replacement for him, which would have been, which Cushing appeared. But of course, we have our town planner here.
Hi, Brian.
So while we only have six voting members on the board, we are not allowed to appoint a citizen to replace a select for a person to secede.
Right, but actually, Paul Wilson has been appointed as a seated member, so he's not an alternate anymore, so.
That's why I did not read him as an alternate.
Oh, okay, sorry. I need to correct my, my roll call, my agenda.
Okay, moving on to item number three, public comments. At this time, we welcome from the audience any comments that would like to present to the board on an item not on today's agenda. Seeing no comment from the audience, we'll move on to item number four, administrative matters. First of all, we'd like to welcome Paul Wilson, who's been seated by the select board to be a planning board member, a full voting member. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Second, on our administrative matters, we have the review of our April 2nd, 2009 minutes, which we had in our package. If we just take a moment to look at these pages by page, I think we'll go through them quickly. Does anybody have any comment on page one? Any comments on page two? I'll note that under adoption of the minutes, the fourth line says town planner, the name says John Scarborough, and I believe that should be Jack Scarborough to be consistent with the rest of the Scarborough times, Scarborough's reference, as well as to help clarify that we don't have four, even though we have four Johns sitting on the board, one of them is by Jack.
I'm sorry, what page was that on?
Page two, under adoption of the minutes, the fourth line.
Oh, okay.
Any other comments on page two? Page three? And finally, page four. There's no further additions or deletions, so all entertain a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
So move.
Rooted by Mr. Scarborough and seconded by Mr. Randlett. Any more comment? All in favor, or aye?
Aye.
Vote. Ask unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number five, correspondence. When I turn the call over to our town planner to walk us through those three points.
Okay, we got, and I sent this in your mail out, a letter from the Baker River Watershed Association that they're having an annual meeting on April 29th at 7:00, the Laurenton Hall, and you should have all gotten copy. Then there was also a flyer advertising various local official workshops sponsored by the local government center, and they always do a really nice job, so I give you a copy of all those workshops. I did receive Points North, which is the North Country Council newsletter. It's about six or eight pages, so I didn't run copies for everyone, but if you want a copy, you're welcome to get one, I'll give you one. Another correspondence that I just passed out to you at your seat was concerning that we sent out a letter to correct, to take corrective action, and this is regarding the Ivy Lane subdivision, the culvert. This doesn't really have anything to do with the subdivision, it's a separate issue, but according to the RSAs, you have to keep your culvert, if it's a culvert on your property, you have to keep it clear so that you don't interfere with the flow of water. And this has been blocked, so we had to send a letter out because it's at the point that Fire Chief Clodston went by there, and he can't get his fire trucks by, because there's, since the culvert's claw, it caused erosion to the road, and now the road is eroded so much, there's a gigantic hole that trucks can't, fire truck can't go by it. So we sent that letter out, and we've given the Smiths till 4:00 PM, April 24th, to take a temporary measure to fix it so that the fire truck can get by, and to actually clean the culvert and fix it for good by May 6th, 2009. So this is just to let you know what's going on with that, since, especially since we're gonna be looking at the subdivision later on. So this is sort of separate from the subdivision, but it's connected. So I have other correspondence that we've been receiving, and then most recently, we got a letter, the last page, we got a letter, the last two pages, from one of the abutters, whose name is Mr. Dork, Dwight Dork, and he's responding to a letter he was sent by Ms. Smith. What he's talking about in the letter is that when Ivy Lane subdivision was discussed by the planning board, it was made clear that the Smiths own that culvert and need to clean it out. When Ms. Smith, she contacted the DeBorgs and the Karens and said, would you be willing to share in cleaning out the culvert? So he's just expressing in his letter that this was against what the planning board recommended, that the planning board said that it was gonna be the Smiths' responsibility. So reminding to that, but please, everyone, you know, take this home and read it so that we'll know, we'll be ready for when we're gonna be hearing that case in May. Oh, and then the other thing is, I sent everyone an email, and I faxed you about the batch elder hearing date that has been set. So May 11th is, everything has to be submitted by the person challenging the town, and then June 10th is the deadline for the town to submit their request for the batch elder hearing. Can that sound helpful? Correspondence.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number six, new business. We have two items in any of this category. The first is a request of continuation by applicant Heidi and Jason Smith for the property PID 221044, which we discussed earlier as Ivy Ivy Lane development. In order to do that, we need a motion to accept the request to have a, be granted a continuance.
Point of order?
Yes.
I see there's a note here that they're not, they are unable to attend the meeting. Should we go forward with this without them in attendance?
This is their request.
Free pardon?
This is their request for us to continue it to another date because they cannot be here.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. So move.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a point of order, doing our preliminary, you can't, if somebody who's an alternate make a motion during the regular session. I, and I know what we have said they can during the minutes.
Right, no, I think it should come from a seated member.
So Ms. Bishop, can I give you a second as a motion first?
Yes.
All right, that came out seconded by Mr. Ahern. Is there any discussion on this motion, a request by the Smiths to continue their application at a later date because they cannot be here today? We all know, just to remind the board that they have through October until their, until the corner vote deadline kicks in for any action to be taken, and of course, even at that time, they can ask for something to happen, so we're not racing against the clock at this point. Well, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of granting a continuance to the Smiths, please say aye.
Aye.
All against, may? Passing unanimously. Second item of new business is a non-binding informal site plan review concerning wastewater treatment and facility improvements. I'd like to invite, to make a presentation, somebody from this project.
I'm Dick Flanders, I'm the Chair of the Coast Coast Water Sewer District. On your agenda, you will present the name of the day program that we're going to present for our, for our engineering right here. Jeff Fannett is here, and instead, make the presentation. Kevin Lincoln, our district administrator, and Steve Cowell, and another commissioner is also present, but we'll allow, I think, Jeff to present the ubiquitous, all right, to be given overview of our plans.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Flanders. Thank you.
Okay, maybe I'll just stay seated, this seems pretty informal. Just as a little bit of background, this is a project that began under an order from the Department of Environmental Services because flows at the plant have reached the point where they mandate facility planning to look at improvement needs over the next 20-year planning period. As it turns out, it pretty much coincides, or these improvements would be moving forward pretty much at a time when the plant's 20, it's gonna be about 20 years old, and that's typical timeframe for a needing to upgrade wastewater treatment plan in a more significant way anyways. So that facility plan was completed in 2007, and we got going on the design of the recommended plan, starting in the middle of last year. And be happy to go into a lot of the details, but the overall goals of the upgrade are to increase the capacity of the plant in terms of flow up to an average daily, or max monthly flow of about 1.1 million gallons per day, average daily flow of 700,000 gallons per day, and a big daily flow of 2 MGD. That's to service the village of, the village itself, the university, and parts of wilderness. The improvements, I don't know if I'm gonna use this, improvements include work inside this building as well as re-siding, re-siding the building, both influence screening and improvements to the grit removal process there, then the, can everybody see the, that, let me start by laying out the site. On this site plan, this is the bank of the river here, just so that if you're not familiar with the site. This portion here is the liquid train treatment facilities. This is where the former compost facility was located. This is where the main, the control building is located. This is the A-frame portion of the building you might be familiar with. There are a number of small structures also on the site, little shed-style buildings here, and some, in this area, there's some remains from the treatment plant process prior to the upgrade that was completed in 91. There's a maintenance garage facility, and there's another garage facility just off of the site plan. So I was starting with the improvements in the liquid train process. There's not gonna be any structural improvements in the liquid train, but there are equipment improvements in the liquid train, so we're, we're, we're not gonna actually be even disturbing ground in this area, even though there's, there's, there's work being done. There's gonna be some concrete demo though in this area, really basically between each of these unit operations, the influent pumping to the primary clarifiers, there's little connector channels similarly between the primary clarifiers and the RBCs that are connector channels, and to the secondary clarifiers. Those channels are gonna be demolished and new piping installed to replace, to replace those channels. Then on the sledge handling side of things, there are again some improvements in an existing building and tankage located here. And then also, and then also in this area, which is, this is the area with real site, site work impacts. The main controlling dewatering building is gonna be expanded. This is, this first block is an area of an existing garage bay, was formerly a truck port, and it was enclosed, and then, and then an all-new addition over to this side. This portion of the extent, the extension of the building is gonna be two-story basement level, I should say, and first, first floor level, and this is gonna, the garage bay area is only gonna be in that grade floor. So the gray area shows the area that's gonna be repaid for this new garage bay that's being installed. Then, in, just to go over the new facilities, this little circle here is the new lime silo that's going in as part of the improvements in the, in the main control building, and this is an old tank that formerly was abandoned, that we're gonna rehabilitate into what's referred to as a gravity thickener for the sledge handling. And this is an area, again, we're gonna put new odor control facilities on what was the found, what was former, form, parts of the former treatment plant referred to as the headworks. It gives us a foundation to locate some new odor control facilities on top of. So I think that, you know, some of the key issues for, for the board are, you know, what are the significant impacts from site planning? The existing composting operation, you know, we made reference to, has been abandoned by the district starting about a year ago. That's gonna be demolished, they're gonna keep the slab on the upper end of the building and the lower end of the building, and the remainder of the building's gonna be demolished, and the area will be landscaped. And then, in this area, we do have a small increase in the paved area, in this area, about mentioning the, the reduction in impervious area we have with the demo of the compost building. And we, because of the size of trucks that we have, we've had to extend the paved area just slightly over into what's the 75-foot buffer zone that we know you're trying to maintain, but we've sought to minimize that as much as possible, and we had originally, but we worked with Miriam to get some equipment out of that 75-foot buffer zone that we had originally targeted putting in there, so we pulled, pulled as much as we can out of the buffer zone to help protect, protect that. That'll, in fact, there's some existing facility, in-ground facilities that'll be demolished and revegetated as part of that effort. In terms of other environmental impacts, the entire site is actually in the floodplain. We're, we're gonna be compensating for, the compost building demolition will compensate for the additional buildings, building space that we're creating, and we will have the garage bay designed for flow, flow through provisions, which is pretty much required in order to design the building in accordance with flood, floodproofing standards. There's no air, well, air criteria or air pollutant concerns in within water control facilities, odor impacts are gonna be significantly reduced. Noise-wise, levels should be the same or, or better, we're eliminating a number of outside veins, no long-term traffic impacts aside from construction. And Jeff, if anybody has any questions, but that's.
If I could just add, just a little more background, we initially entered into an agreement with Wright Pierce, I think it was 2003, to look at the odor-related issues and their potential sources, and Wright Pierce came out with a report documenting all the various potential sources and actual sources within the plant compound, and one of the things that was pointed out, for example, was that something like 70% of the odors emitted from the facility were coming out as part of the composting operation. And we made it clear to the district elders that, and we recognized that as an issue. We also recognized we had structural issues with the composting building itself, essentially rusting out from the inside. And we said that when the, you know, again, as Jeff mentioned, we're 19 years into a 20-year life of these facilities, we're hoping to push it, to make it to 20 years, but as of about April and May last year, as you indicated, we had to shut down the composting operation since the, the rotator, essentially, that mixed the compost and, or created the compost, it broke down, couldn't see investing $150,000 or more dollars to rehab that machine, given the issues with the building, and issues with odor and so on. So that whole operation was shut down. We're still using part of it, we're using the, the north end of the building for mixing. We bring in wood ash, our firm, our resource management, Inc., that we are in a contract with, the manager of biosolids, brings in wood ash, we mix it up with the sludge, the watered sludge, and then it is hauled from the plant as a Class B biosolid and land applied to farms, farms in the area, as opposed to what we did have, which was Class A compost, which we could give away to the public, and many of us have used it personally. So as much as we hated to see, you know, the loss of the compost product, it was a great recycled product, this was the best short-term thing we could do, and it also, of course, addressed the odor issues, but it, it meant that we had, you know, to do something else with the, with the solids, and it also meant that, you know, we had to be sensitive to the fact that we, with this order from the state, we had to go into another design mode and look into yet another scenario, what we're gonna do for the next 20 years. And actually, during our district vote, I think it was 2007, we agreed to make it a priority to add additional odor control equipment, and that was gonna be focused, I think, on the sledge holding tank, which was another major source of odors that was pointed out, and we're gonna put a separate standalone odor control system, a kind of a package unit, as I remember it, near that, if you could point to that, Jeff, that sledge holding tank, we're gonna order, or locate another unit right in there. As it turns out, with some rethinking because of this current upgrade, I think we're gonna bypass the need to have that odor control unit located there. Actually, we've consolidated odor control into the one spot for the old influent, which is a change from initial planning that Jeff indicated, we had some site on the bank of the river, I think initially, where the old odor control unit, and it was spread around the site, so I think he's done a nice job consolidating the upgrade essentially to the footprint that you see involved here now, and by doing what we're doing, we're, of course, we're meeting both the state and federal requirements for an upgraded facility, but we're also, you know, trying to position ourselves, you know, for the next 20 or plus years. And, you know, we are also, you know, looking even further down the road relative to continuing discussions with our neighbors to the south, and actually relative to maybe regional concept that might be an even longer-term solution in this. But this gets us to where we, we need to be now, and fortuitously, timing was good because we had Wright Pierce doing this work. It is a shovel-ready project, it did qualify as one of the shortlisted projects on the stimulus funding that Department of Environmental Services has been responsible for, so we're excited that that was made eligible in our more recent discussions with DES. In fact, we might even get a bad deal with rural development in terms of the loan, and what we might be legal on versus get a grant for, so we're still working out those details out now, but this is the kind of project that's gonna happen soon, and we're planning on getting it started this summer, so it's something that is gonna make a difference in additional odor controls real short-term. So we're, we're getting there, but it's been a long process for the improvements.
All right, just a couple other points. We are investigating something Steve's asked us to, looking at use of pervious pavements for the new pavement areas, and there is, there's a storm drain outfall in this area that I don't think it's shown, but we're gonna be adding a vortex grit removal system on, on the outlet of that storm drain system to, to provide stormwater treatment from the paved area, around the process building anyways. And architecturally, of course, treatment plant sites got a lot of concrete tankage that you really can't do a lot with, and, but for the, for the building and for the renovated headworks building, we're making, yeah, if you're familiar with the site, a lot, there's a lot of metal buildings on the site, but we're gonna, we're working with transitioning to a bottom of flat four type siding system, and then either, we may stick with metal roofing, but we may go to architectural shingles if we can. It depends on how much we have to tie into existing metal buildings as far as which way that goes, but trying to move towards something that fits in better with the village setting that it's in, and the metal building, you know, appearance of the site should be reduced pretty significantly with the removal of the compost, so.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Mr. Dragon?
I'm just curious the, how long the duration will be, will this be in phases for one year period of time, I think two to three, four years, I'm just curious.
The construction?
Oh, you're doing renovations, improvements, and new construction, I think it's all boiled in. Is there a time period? I'm just, I don't care.
No, it's, we're, we're gonna be given the contractor somewhere between 12 and 15 months to complete the project.
To complete the whole, wow, that's, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, this is just an informational presentation, there's no action for us to take, so thank you very much.
I'm your third. Come down and visit us, don't you? We give tours of the plant every regular day.
Are you making predictions on how the percentage of odor control will be attained compared to what we have right now?
Well, again, we've, I think, nipped in the bud a good percentage from the compost
Well, again, we've, I think, nipped in the bud a good percentage from the compost.
The compost. I know all the neighbors of the compost, and so they appreciate this quarter. That was a very large portion of the odors, but that was probably 65, 70% of the odors all by itself. And then, yeah, capturing the sledge tank odors is probably a good, of what was uncontrolled prior to this, probably like 90% of the remaining odors that weren't already under some other form of control.
Thank you.
But it won't be odor free.
Right.
It won't. We could spend millions as the city Conca does, trying to nip it in the bud, and we've all drive by Conca, they're kind of going, no, it ain't quite there yet. But we're keeping, keeping an eye on it anyway. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Derek.
So moving on on our agenda to number seven, other business. Is there other business? Any other business from the town planners perspective? No? In that case, we'll move to item number eight, which is again, an invitation from the public to speak on any matter not prepared with. He would not, we'll move on to item number nine, which...
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Ahern has moved to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Wilson has seconded. Shall we all vote with our feet? Or your hands? Aye. Thank you very much.
Could you just verbally state the time some...
Oh, and the time is 7 o'clock on the clock.